Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Sandra Schaefer. I'm the president of the Democratic Women's Club of Greater Broward. I had the pleasure of actually speaking to our guest tonight before. But you know, we're probably what forty-nine, forty-eight days up until the election on November third. So I wanted to bring her back closer to the time. So the people of Lauderdale can find out, you know, what it is that she's trying to do for the residents. And like why she's the best candidate for seat three. So again, I'm Sandra Schaefer, president of the Democratic Women's Club of Greater Broward. And I had the pleasure of interviewing Nadia Assad this afternoon. I'm going to have her introduce herself and then we're going to talk about all the plans that she have for the city of Lauderdale.
Hi, thank you Sandra for having me. Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you again tonight. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Nadia Assad. I am the candidate for Lauderdale Commission, seat three. I was born and raised in Haiti. Migrated here in nineteen ninety-seven. I've been in the community serving for the longest. And now I find the opportunity to step in into a greater stage to continuing on serving my community. I sure, I'm sure that Ms. Schaefer will have more questions for me along the way to tell you, to ask me more about, you know, little things that you probably have in mind as far as what I do for living, as far as what kind of food I like besides the jerk chicken.
So you know, I used to say, so it's always be collay. And either you're gonna have that with some grill or some turkey tasseau, you know.
Not for me. Those things are not for me. I like my banana, you know, the boy plant and the don't plant. Yeah, those are my, my things. Those are my things. But it's a pleasure to be here and I truly appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I always, you know, give the candidates an opportunity to introduce themselves. So tell her, so but before we get into that, what, what I always want to know and what I think is important for the constituent and the residents of Lauderdale to know is why is it that you decided to run for the seat?
Well, it's basically, I will say that it's in my DNA. I'm a public servant searching, searching for a public, you know, political office to better assist the community. It's not like I wake up one of these mornings and then decided, okay, there you go. I want to become a politician or I want to become a commissioner. I have been a public servant since, I will say, probably since I was a little girl. Because I remember even back in my country, even when things are not doing good for me and my family, who were struggling financially in different aspects of our life, like many people from the island, I would say. But we, me and my mom and my siblings, we had always seen people first before us. So it is stayed with me. So when I come here in nineteen ninety-seven, with my work, working in public offices such as my background is nursing. I work mostly in mental health. I manage mental health clinic that are government-based funded. So you know, I deal a lot with the public and I deal a lot with the minority. So I saw a lot of needs for me to advocate and educate my community. So it started there as well here in Florida. And from that point on, I am used to partner up with different organizations. So the police department, the fire rescues, the Chamber of Commerce, you know, we've been out in the community, helping as much as we can. So I see the need for me to better assist my community. It's for me like a step up, you know, way to better assist legally my community. Where I can make changes and then go to the last advocate for them. Because face it or not, like they always say, it is true. If you're not sitting at the table, you're sitting on the table. And there's no better way to serve your community by becoming an elected official like that. You have a better voice, a larger voice, more, like you said, you make more noise when you get there. So that's basically the reason why I'm running for office.
So you wanna, so you saw some needs. So you saw some needs and you wanted to serve the people of Lauderdale. But what specific needs did you see that they wanted? You know, you said you've always been a public servant. You always saw people first. If there was a need someone had and if you were able to help and service them with that need, you did that. You did stuff in nursing. Mental health is a big thing that we're having, that's going on right now. But what is it like, what is it that you saw that you think the people in Lauderdale need?
Well, as I moved in here in Lauderdale, the first thing that I had noticed was the property tax that was white rising. Property tax here, it's a big issue for us, especially for me. It's become personal because as a single mom of four, I would tell you straight up, I cannot afford the tax that I see that's going up. You know, for me and my family, it is not, it's unbearable. That is one. And second of all, education, you know, it's number one key for the growth of a community. Whether you look at it in a broader way or whether you look at it in the scholar's way. Where you have your school, you need to make sure that you have those school in a better grade, in a better position to attract people to come and buy property into your city. That is one. And second and third of all, when you look at the environment, we definitely need a lot to be done. First of all, we need a facelift. And for that, of course, we have to go by education. Educating our community doesn't mean that, yes, we need to have, you know, those people going back to school and get their degrees and everything else, which is a great thing. But it means that you need to educate them on different resources that we have in the community. And educate them in how they need to take care of their properties and why is that? And working hand in hand with the police, with the law enforcement and the city commission. So they can go ahead and see in which way we can reduce crime in our community, which is very important as well. So those are things that I think that if we put together, if we work together as a city as a whole, we can tackle those issues definitely.
Okay, so you, that's a, you, that's a lot. And I, and I, and I understand most of it. So we're gonna break it, we're gonna break some of this down and deal with it in smaller bites, right? So one, before we get into all of that, I wanted to, no, let's just get into that and then I'll, I'll make the other point. So one of the things you said is that the rising property taxes is an issue in the city of Lauderdale, right? But isn't that a good thing? Because like if the property taxes are going up, doesn't that also mean that the value of the property in that city is going up? Is that what that means or not?
That real, no, not necessary. Say, for example, I'm gonna give you an example as far as me personally and with different people that I have spoke throughout of the community. You come in and you buy a house, right? You buy, say, let's, let's hypothetically say you buy it for a thousand dollars. You know that your, your mortgage is gonna be a thousand dollars a year, right? And next thing you know, the next couple of years, you have a mortgage that you were not expecting, that it was not in your budget, that it was not something that you were planning on doing, that, you know, become like five more thousand, five thousand more dollars and you cannot afford it. So what will happen is either you're gonna go foreclosure, you're gonna, that's why you have now more, more renters than homeowners. Because it becomes difficult for them to keep those, these properties because the tax is too high. And when things like that happen, what happens is you have businesses. They, they will definitely not want to come and, you know, bring businesses in your community because the tax is too high.
Who's determining the amount of the taxes? Isn't that just, who, who, who makes the decision on the taxes? Is that something that you'll be able to do as a commissioner? Is that something you get to vote on? Or is it just that Broward County sets the tax amount and based on the value of your property, that's what you have to pay?
Yep, that too, that too. But now, look at, look at it this way. You have a budget in the city that you manage, right? So basically, things that are needed to be done in the city is being taken off the budget. What happened when we don't have enough money into the budget? We raise the tax to get things done. That is one of the issues that I was talking about, you know, the other day. That's one of the reasons why we need to fill out our census. Because we need those resources to be allocated into our city to take care of things that are needed in the city. So now, when the city need to do certain things that are very, that are necessary for the community, when we don't have enough funding into our, you know, budget, guess where it's come from? We have to raise the tax.
In order to meet the needs of the citizens. So you said something about the census that's extremely important. Do you know what's the percentage of the people in Lauderdale that's completed their census already?
About fifty, fifty percent. I think it's fifty-five, fifty-seven percent that's completed.
Oh, so we have to do better because that's a lot of money left on the table. That's absolutely, and one example that I can use is that my mom lives in Miami-Dade County and I teach at a school in Miami-Dade. And I remember they just, they had given an example that they had ninety-three percent of the people had completed the census in like two twenty-ten, right? That was twenty-ten. And so that was a seven percent, like they didn't get that seven percent. And that's seven percent equal to about like a billion, you know, like a billion dollars.
A lot of money.
So we're talking about fifty percent of the residents of Lauderdale have not completed their taxes. That's millions and millions and millions that will go. And so, so the person who said that, you know what, what, how is it gonna benefit me if I complete this, if I complete the census? It might not matter to me at all. What, how would you respond to that person? Because we do want to push for people to see how important it is to complete the census.
Well, you do have emergencies that happen all the time and you're not exempt to it. The fire rescue that come into your rescue in the blink of an eye, when you call them, their resources come from that. The same for police, the police. You have your school. Have you ever wondered how your kids get to get free lunches and that, the resources that they are using at the school actually? Because you, for public school, they don't really pay. They don't pay to go to school, right? So these coming from the census as well, from the Medicaid, from the Medicare, from the foot stamp, from your, you know, first time home buyer program. You wondering why they put you on the, on the, on the waiting list? This is one of the reasons because they don't have enough resources. When you're sitting at the bus stop, you're waiting for the bus for probably, you know, the bus sometimes, you know, they, they can't be running late because there's not enough of them running in that same direction in your area is because of that. Because they don't know how many people that are in that city to put, you know, that amount of buses that are needed for you and your family. So everything that has to do with the good functioning of a city with resources that we use, even from the road that your car is driving by goes, you know, come from the census as well. So you have all, all the impulse of go ahead and have that fill out.
All right, so the numbers, the numbers need to be accurate. And I know that, I know this from, you know, what I've heard is that, I'm saying, I know this from what I've heard. And I've actually had clients that tell me the same thing is that some of them are afraid to fill out the census because they think immigration is gonna get involved, right? There's like, oh, you know, they ask all these questions. And you're like, you know, they may not have status in the United States. The person is not a resident or citizen or don't have TPS or anything like that. So they were afraid to fill out the census because they're like, oh, no, if I fill it out, they're gonna share the information with immigration and then I'm gonna have problems. So what, what do you want to say to the people that have that thought to think that their immigration status will be disclosed from collecting that information from the census?
Well, to begin with, this question of are you a citizen or not has been removed from the form. You don't have to answer that question. That, that is one guarantee. And second of all, when they're putting out the information that you provide them, they don't say your name. They don't say, you know, your age or your social security. They don't, they don't disclose none of those things. They will disclose them as statistics. Like this household have ten person on it, five of them are blue, two of them are yellow. So they can know exactly whom they're dealing with. Is it Haitian, is it Jamaican or the white or the black? How many is in there? And they determine from that point on how much money they need to allocate to that particular city for the city to prop to, you know, proper function and then have the resources needed to serve the community. So that's basically it. They don't care if you come, if you have your citizenship. They don't care if you have your green card. They just want to count to know how much money that they're gonna give the city so you can better function. That's basically it.
They just want the number of bodies, period. They just want how many bodies are in, in that location. The other thing that you talked, talked about is how the importance of education. During this whole election cycle, I get, I got the chance to meet some really dynamic people. Some that were running for office, some were able to run successfully. Others, you know, they're gonna try again in a couple of years or so. I mean, in the, in the school board and education was a big thing. I learned about some of the disparities that they have in the schools throughout Broward County. Some school have way more than, than they need. Some don't have enough, some are in the middle. I mean, I believe the, the area that you live in, Lauderdale, is one of those areas where there's some issues with some of the schools. I don't know, that was, I know, I know I was told that one of the schools had mold. I don't want to say Lauderdale was one of those schools that fell into that situation. But I, it was, I, I, I was able to obtain some information that there are some issues with the schools in Lauderdale. Is that something as commissioner that you can do, that you can advocate for? Would you speak on that, please?
Definitely, that is something that is dear to my heart. As you know, I have four kids and myself coming from Haiti where I had the experience. I remember there was a time where, you know, I have myself to stop going to school so I can allow my brother and my two sisters, I mean, my sisters to go. Because my mom couldn't afford to pay for the four of them, for the four of us. So basically, education is for me, you know, my number one priority. And you all know as well, statistics shows that any city, any nation, anywhere that you go, if you want to have the growth, economic growth, it's taught by education at all level. So those kids, they are our future. They deserve the best, they deserve the best, you know, they need to have the best environment possible, the best resources there are possible to help them grow, to help them succeed academically. So you'll find out there, that's how I become very involved in the city of Lauderdale. As a matter of fact, when I was, when I used to be in Miami, when I come here, right? In the city of not Miami, Lauderdale, my daughter was assigned to one of the school in the district, right? And I went to that school to fill out the application for my daughter. I kid you not, what I saw over there got me to be, you know, that, you know, encouraged me to really get involved. Because the thing is like, some people think that you have to be at a state level to be able to touch the education of your city. No, it's not true. It's up to me and you, right? To get involved, to find out who's your school board, what's going on in your school? What are the resources that they have as parent and as community? We have to get that done. So when I saw the, the, the way that the school was, I went to the city hall, to the city of Lauderdale. I spoke with, at the time, Mayor Thurston was a commissioner. So I touched base with him. I told him, listen, this is not acceptable. What are we gonna do about that? Then he walked with me. We, we, we spoke to the school board of Broward County. We, we walk with it until we get the, the situation resolved. So it is something very important that we have to be able to realize that together, like my slogan say in my, in my campaign, we can accomplish a lot when we work together. And education is one of the best things that somebody can invest into for the growth of your community. And you have to do that. Like, you know, me, I mentor at the school. Every morning, before the pandemic, I have one hour, two hour at the school. I go to middle, to Parkway Middle. We mentor, you know, to those kids and make sure that they get the encouragement and the support that they need to succeed. It's a very important issue. Education is a very important issue. And yes, as a commissioner, I will, you know, you know, very, do my very, very best, if it's not even focused on that, to really make sure that we have the best school ever, that we get the resources that are needed. I know that there's pandemic right now. We don't know where we're gonna be. But most definitely, this is something that I will be focusing on, education.
Well, there was talk today that the students are gonna go back to school in October in Broward County. I believe Miami-Dade is going back sometime next week. Palm Beach may be going back, some other place have gone back. Do you support this decision for the schools to reopen next month?
Well, let me tell you something. Personally, I, I don't, I don't support it. I know that there's a lot involved in it, especially, you know, economically. But my take is if we find a vaccine, if we find something, some remedy for that pandemic, if we find something for the virus, if my daughter get it, how, how are we gonna go ahead and, you know, address that? So I am not, I am not for it at all. I think we should continue, you know, virtually until they, you know, find some kind of solution for that virus until then. Because you know kids, how it is. You go to school today, one kid got that cold, the little cold that we usually get, right? The whole class will have it. And sometimes I will be, you know, going to, and they will be calling you to tell you, come and get your kids. The kid, he's coughing or sneezing, whatever it is, the nose is running. They don't want that over there. So why is that now we have a virus, something that's killing people actually? And you want to open school for kids to go and get themselves exposed? I, I am not, you know, I am not for that. I understand there's, you know, economic, you know, finance issues on that and everything else. But, you know, life first, right? Health first.
Yeah, so I understand this. I know that there are a lot of parent groups that are saying, no, allow the kids to go back to school. There's a way to do it safely. CDC says, as long as you social distance, you have a mask requirement. You know, there are ways that they can go back into the school and then not be an issue. And some parents, I mean, some of the children are just not able to learn in a remote environment. They need to go into, they need to go to school. Do you at least understand that some parents, some?
I do, I do, I do, I do. But in the meantime, again, it's, life is priceless, you know? Life is priceless. If, for me, as far as I'm concerned, if my daughter lost a year of school, you know, that will not kill her. I'll still at least have her to enjoy her for the little time that God give me. You know, that little precious thing to enjoy. But, you know, as far as, you know, me sending my kids to school when there's no, you know, nothing else that has been, you know, said, okay, yes, I do have, you know, a treatment for it, I am not sending her.
Yeah, because I know, I know they said that.
Especially mine is asthma. She's, she got asthma.
Oh, yeah.
She got asthma. Yeah. Not only that, my mom have underlying condition. So I'm not sending nobody out there besides me. When I come home, my front door have the whole spray things, you know, umbrella, the whole vapor, everything you can possibly imagine for me to, you know, try to protect them. That doesn't mean that, you know, it might not happen. But knowing that you're doing your best to protect them, it's, you know, one of them. And especially not sending her to school, I am not, definitely not.
Yeah, because I know there's a concern of people who live in multi-generational homes, you know. Mother that's seventy-seven years old, she doesn't live with me. But, you know, we have to, you know, we go and see her every now and then. I, I, I have, you know, I guess, I mean, I'm sure I have like pre-existing condition on one of the people that's a little overweight. And, you know, I heard people like die for coronavirus if you're just a little too fat. So I ain't taking any chances of like, of like sending the children to school. They might be okay, they'll come home and either get me sick or get my mother sick. And, you know, we, we definitely have to do our best. But at the same time, we do understand that there's some parents who need to send their children to school.
Yes.
Yes, some children who need to be into, in the classroom. And I, I'm confident that our superintendent is doing what's best for the children and they will create an environment where they can social distance as best as possible and also to keep everything clean and sanitized to protect them. The other thing that, issue that you said is important to you that you want to deal with as a commissioner in Lauderdale is some about the environment in Lauderdale. You said Lauderdale needs like a facelift. When you say facelift, what is it that needs to happen in Lauderdale?
We need to put a little makeup, you know, some mascara, you know, lip gloss. Exactly, just clean up a little bit. And all that, you know, can happen, you know, when we work all together, you know, get that sense of ownership, that sense of partnership, okay, this is my city. I want to see it nice. I want to see it, you know, grow. We do have, it's, it's, let me, let me ask you something. You can, can you name one city that, you know, that doesn't need improvement?
So I think I live in the best city in Broward. I live in Miramar West, you know what I'm saying?
When you go to the east, you know, when, when you go to the east, when you go, I used to live in Miramar West as well. So all cities, you know, are in need of improvement. There's, there's always.
I just want to brag a little bit, but yes, I, I, everybody, definitely all do better. We can always do better.
Exactly. And, and I think that if, if we do that, you know, we will raise up our property values in the same time. You know, crime rate will definitely go down and, you know, our businesses will, will see better days. We definitely need to do that. And, you know, at, at times, you know, it doesn't take that much, it doesn't take that much. Do you remember what we, what we used to call Combeat in Haiti?
Combeat, oh, so, no, no, I don't, actually, I don't.
So you know what, you're not Haitian. I am done talking to you.
Who Haitian parents? I grew up in a whole Haitian house. I wasn't born in Haiti. But both my parents, my, both my parents were Haiti, so I claim it. I wasn't born in Haiti, though.
So this is, this is, Combeat, it's, 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 it's like an organization, something that we, when we all come together, we forget if we're white, if we're blue, if we're from Leoghan, Prodepe. You know, we all got together for one, for that one cause, right? Like for, for example, this week we'll say, okay, we're gonna go ahead and tackle fifty-six tweet. We all go together. We got the broom, we got the fence, we got the grass, we got everything and we make it happen. Because what you're looking at right now, you have the pandemic that's there, right? And financially, everything is going now. And you don't have that many people that have filled out that census twenty-twenty. So you know that somehow, somewhere, if we don't get some stuff coming in, we're gonna be in trouble. This is something we can definitely do. We can definitely do that. You know, put everything together, all come together and then, you know, give it a facelift. Put, you know, some signs here, some signs that say, welcome to Lauderdale. Because most of the signs, like one of my, can, my, one of my co-candidate was saying the other day, when you enter Lauderdale, really, you don't have something that says, you know, really welcome to the, if you have one, it means like more color, something, you know, like I said, a little makeup.
Yes, yes.
Probably not really a little bit. This, this, if I'm, if I'm buying a house, let me tell you something, I want to see those things. You understand? I want to see those things. If I want to go ahead and buy a house in a city, first I look at the school rate, right? That's the first thing that we, we do, especially when we have kids. We look at the school rate, we look at the businesses, what, what, what you have there. Is there a mall? Is there, you know, what, what is the crime rate? We look at all those things. So in order for us to attract people to come in our city and actually stay, don't pass through, we need to have all of these together.
And I have to tell you that I spend a lot of time driving, you know, but not as much now because of pandemic, but before. And I'm one of those people, like if I'm on a rail trip, I take pictures of the signs that says, welcome to the next city. You know what I mean? Like, I remember ninety-five and into the sign that says, welcome to Palm Bay, right? I mean, I, I mean, it's, it's great, like they, they, the fact that you mentioned it, I, I can even say that I'm one of those people that I pay attention and I see what the welcome to that next city sign looks like.
Yes, yes.
All different ones. So those, just those little things are important.
They make a difference.
Even when I was in college, like when we were, I'm having a bad day, you know, because you know, sometimes you have a bad day, you're studying, you're up all night. And we used to have this thing, look good, feel good, right? So like, if you just, you just put some clothes on, you know, fix your face up a little bit.
Yes, that's it.
Better, so, like you said, just get a little paint and sometimes that right there will just, just lift the people's spirit. Just doing a little bit. Sometimes it's not even like a major thing, just, you know, just adding something, dressing it up a little bit. And definitely can feel good.
Yeah. And then one thing that also that we could, we could also do, you know, sometimes when you have the zoning, employers go out, right? The coding, the coding, right? They go ahead and, you know, they just go ahead and they knock at your door and they give you the issue you're wanting, right? We could do better than that. You know, I know we don't have that many employer now. We have, you know, issues with, you know, pandemic and everything else. But we could educate the person, the property that you're giving it to, why are you giving the, you know, the ticket? When you don't do this, this is what happened. Your property values go down. Why are we doing this? Because I'm gonna need, the city's gonna need more money to do that. So once we explain those things, we educate one another, it become more personal, the person will understand, even for the ones that are renting. So we have to have that education ongoing.
Absolutely. And with the ticket, they can also give them a resource guide too, right? You know, of launch, put together a guide of people who does launch service at a reasonable amount. And sometimes people don't realize that paint is not as expensive as you think. Paint my house, they think it costs thousands and thousands of dollars. You can go and, and even like, you know, and I'm trying to put Home Depot loads in those situation. But sometimes, you know, that if somebody orders a bucket of paint and it's not the right color, you know, they have to just get it out the store. So you can get like a, like a two hundred dollar gallon of paint for like forty bucks or something like that, you know?
Exactly.
And the person can paint their house. So they're thinking it's hundreds and hundreds of dollars. But you literally can probably do it with like a reasonable amount of money. It's just a little bit of elbow grease, right? Make it like a project with the kids or with the family or something like that. It might not, it's just a professional job, but it definitely can look a little bit better. And that's something that, you know, you know, people should do. Like if you're gonna give them a citation, give them a resource guide to let them know different ways they can solve this problem.
Exactly. And the city has been doing that as well. They, they did have a program where they give out pens, you know, to the, you know, here to the resident. They do have incentive as well that they do at times. But sometimes like I, what I, what I'm trying to explain is like, sometimes when you know the why, right? It makes more sense. And you, once you get educated, when you know the why, it makes more sense. So that's.
Yeah, so it doesn't seem like they're just trying to harass you and make you pay money that you can't pay.
Exactly.
The reason why you want to do it. Because the appearances, I mean, it really does make a difference, you know? Sometimes if just everybody having a grass cut, right? Like if the grass not cut, it looks like nobody lives in the house. And that's, which is something as simple, as simple as that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so one of you also talked about, while we were having our conversation, you talked about policing. Is Lauderdale one of the cities that's contracted with BSO or do you have your own police department?
We do have our own police department.
And how, and how is that, how is that going? Because Lauderdale is also one of those cities, you know, I'm not gonna tell, you know, we talk about, we think about the crime rate, but of one of the cities, I think. you know, I'm not gonna tell, you know, we talk about, we think about the crime rate, but of one of the cities, I think there are some issues with, um, policing in Lauderdale. It's one of those over police communities, is there anything the commissioners can do about that and how is it that you're trying to? Cause building relationships with community and police is a really big thing right now. Um, does Lauderdale have, Hill have any of those plans to try to build more community with police and the people to maybe do something about the crime rate in that city?
I'll tell you something, um, that, um, our police chief has been doing a wonderful job trying to keep up everything together. And she has been doing great, um, and do, do have, um, policing's, um, program that they've been, um, doing throughout of the community. Like, uh, you know, coffee with the cop, right? They do have different programs where they go to the school, they mentors the, the school as well, right? They have different programs that they have been, um, you know, that have been implemented throughout of the city. And they have been doing wonderful. I am one of their C O P, as a matter of fact. I work with them, volunteer with them with their U program and they are, I am one of their C O P members. They have been doing a wonderful job, but again, um, it, it at times, you, you have to understand that it police, the, the police job is not an easy one. It is very difficult and I'm, I am encouraging everybody that have a little time to volunteer with them, to partner up with them. And then try to see if they can help out. In their programs, they explain to you what they going through. You can sit down with them, you can put yourself into their shoes, they explain to you certain procedures, certain things that they do in the community. Their process, how they do it, what's going on, you can put yourself into their shoes and see what's going on. It is very educative. And at this time, we have been putting together with different organizations, when I say we, I tend to say we, because I am a part of their C O P. I always think myself as a police. But they have been putting different program out there, you know, in the community, um, you know, partnering up with the community, trying to learn what's going on. They have the, um, cultural diversity training that they have been putting together. It has been, um, challenging, especially with the COVID nineteen, but I will tell you that, um, my head to Chief Stanley, she has been doing a wonderful job.
And you said a great thing, you said the police chief is a fame, a female and, um, she's one, she's one of few, right? And not that many, um, female police chiefs, so that's already a progressive, um, that's already a progressive, um, step on the part of Lauderdale is that they have a police chief, um, that's, that's doing, um, great work, um, for the city. Um, you talked about how because of the property taxes, uh, there's a lot of, there's more renters, um, than, uh, homeowners in the city of Lauderdale. I believe that's what you said.
Yes, fifty, fifty, fifty. You have fifty percent of renters, fifty percent of, um, homeowners. And we need more homeownership, yes, we need more homeownership.
Right, because that's, um, and you said the homeownership, even with the ones, the taxes are high, but that's how, you know, the city is gonna work. Um, is there any, so we're, we're dealing with the pandemic, we talked about it and how it affects, um, education. Um, I, I know that it's also affecting small businesses, right? I was one of the persons, like I, I had an office in the city of Sunrise for a long time, then I moved into the city of Lauderdale. Um, I had a, I, I was sharing space in a lot of him all, and because of COVID, I was like, I'm not going anywhere. And I literally moved out of my space, right? So I know that I'm one of the small businesses that used to be in Lauderdale and I'm not there anymore. Is there something that you plan on doing, um, as a commissioner, bring small businesses back into the city? Or to, um, find ways to help the ones that are still there? Is there something?
More definitely, that is something that is very important for the growth of the city. Um, right now, I will tell you that, um, our commissioner, Denise Grant, Mrs. Grant, she has been a wonderful job partnering up with the Chamber of Commerce. They have been putting workshops together, you know, educating the community, especially the small businesses about resources that are there to help them um, with, um, their daily basis, um, need. And, um, we will definitely be, um, working together with everyone as, you know, I become the, um, commissioner of City of Lauderdale. Um, I cannot really tell you exactly what is gonna be the plan. You know, first, when you get in office, the first thing that you do, like I always tell you, we do SWOT analysis and see what's going on. So we can progress and find about what are the present needs of the community. But definitely, if you want to have, um, economic growth, you really have to focus on the small businesses. Bring more of them in and make sure that they know your city as one of those places that you can stop by and find everything from the jerk chicken, from the griot, from the carabella, you can find everything there, so you, you don't have to go anywhere else. And then in the same time, that will definitely boost up the employment rate into the city. Have more people that's living the city, get on, get on planet.
Yes, definitely, there's a lot of good food, um, in, um, in, in Lauderdale. I know that there was even like, uh, um, if you're into vegan and vegetarian food, there, you can buy like everything. And I used to be able to go get healthy smoothies with the Irish moss and things like that, so yes.
Something for everybody, food and then, as, as, as clothing as well, designers, there's a lot of designers there. You know, there's a lot of things that we can do within the city to make sure that we boost up the economy. And definitely, I pray God that, you know, things come down with the pandemic, so we can move forward, but we will definitely do that.
Be able to come back, yes, cause I know that, um, some people that own hair salons there and that, that whole, um, industry has taken a bit of a hit just because of the way they have to, um.
Yes, exactly.
You know, you have a few people, um, in their business at a time and their cleaning regimen and everything like that. So definitely, um, you know, hope, once this is resolved or get better, or we figure out a way to deal with the new normal, and we'll be able to, you know, do a lot of, uh, more investing and helping people out, uh, helping out the small businesses in the city of Lauderdale.
Yeah. They have been doing a great job, so far so good. They have been a great job, you know, comparing to what's going on, yes, they have, they have.
Amen. Um, so one of the other, um, things that, we're gonna talk about housing again, because what, some, what's happening now is that, you said, um, the city has fifty percent renters. There's a moratorium on evicting people who can't pay their rent. We know that there's some folks that haven't been working since March and, you know, or they're trying to find some sort of way, I mean, they're getting some unemployment. I mean, and I don't think they're gonna just waive all of that rates. I don't know if that's gonna be the plan, if there's gonna be some sort of something that will come, hopefully something would come from the federal government that would allow, allow the renters to apply for, so the landlords can get the money. But if the expectation is, is people who haven't been working since March, once this moratorium is lifted, that they have to pay back rent for six or seven months. I don't see that happening, right? And it's gonna be tricky, so even if the person was able to maybe save up some money to move into another place, they're gonna probably have an eviction on their record, right? Last place, how are they gonna be able to rent in another place? Uh, if there are anything, I, I think that's, yeah, when you get elected, that may be an issue that you have to deal with for your residents. Do you, have you thought about that? Have you thought about how that issue can be addressed? Cause you're gonna have people with evictions trying to get someone, convince someone else to let them rent their place.
Yes, definitely, and when you look at it, um, once they out of their place, then some of the places asking for three to four, you know, down deposit, that's something already that they cannot, you know, um, afford. I'll tell you personally, I had to deal with couple of the residents here in Lauderdale, where I have to, out of my own pocket to help them get hotel room to stay. And, um, you, what you will find out, we do have, we did have the care programs here in Lauderdale that was helping the resident as far as the business as well to pay for their rent. And what you'll find again, the education issue, whereas most of the resident didn't know about the program. And I personally experienced that where I was conversing down to some, um, areas where I, I met some, um, somebody that, you know, was telling me that, oh my God, I am not doing well, and I was, okay. What's going on? Can we talk? And he didn't tell me anything, he was sitting in his car when I approached him. And then he said, he just, he didn't tell me anything, he just hand me, hand over to me the eviction notice that he just found while, you know, when coming home from, you know, from his job, he's one of, um, handyman, right? So, and the wife is not working anymore, the wife was the person that was really, you know, sustaining the house as far as job is concerned. As a handyman, you get a little job here, a little job there, so there was nothing there. So when I, when I saw that, I'm like, wow, my God, I'm so sorry about that. He said, he didn't even let the wife see the note. He just grabbed it from the door and then went back to the car and sitting down, trying to plot and see what is that he's gonna do. So then I would, I was telling him, listen, have you heard of the program that the city have that can assist you with your rental and everything else? He didn't know, he was like clueless. So again, those are the things that we need to sit down and do, educate the people about things that are there, resources that, that are available for them. The census that can help them, you know, and find out how, which way that we're gonna go by. Again, time will tell, and when we get there again, you know, sitting down with the city commission and, you know, um, the, the, the mayor and the vice mayor and the city manager to see which way we're gonna go and how we're gonna be able to assist these people that's, you know, it, it's crazy, cause miss, I, I know how it feels, you know, to be, you know, to that point, like, oh my God, I'm gonna be homeless. Cause there was a time, you know, um, couple of years ago, I would say probably two thousand fourteen or thirteen, I don't remember. I was like certain that that night I was gonna be sleeping in the car with my kids. Because I didn't know anything, I didn't know better, I didn't have the resources, I didn't know about, not, none of those resources that you guys have here. You know, as far as system or nothing like that, I didn't know about that. So that night, you know, God, God, you know, God say a prayer and he goes, send a prayer and send that person that I was supposed to be, um, giving the money to, to get the house. And the person said, you can't come in. So that's the reason why I didn't sleep in the car, but otherwise, I would have been sleeping in the car with my kids, because I didn't know better, I didn't have the resources. I didn't have nobody to tell me, okay, listen, you can call for, what was the, the number that you call usually when you have some problem, two-one-one or something like that, or three-one-one? Then they can give you, you know, the resources that, that are available throughout the county or city that you're living in to get help and things like that. I didn't know.
Number is so we can post.
So after my divorce, it was hard and, you know, I know the feeling of not having enough mon- money to, to, to feed your kids or being disclosed to be homeless. So it's something dear to my heart and, you know, definitely will be working hard on that to find out.
We're encouraging people to, uh, fill out the census, but we also know that, um, all, everyone, the whole United States is gonna have some problems. Because, um, because of taxes, right? So people, one thing they can't pay, people aren't shopping as much as they used to, cause I'm, I'm like a shopper, like I have, I used to be in Ross probably like two or three times a week, right? And I literally have not been in there since like April, like, you know, once I really, how serious this coronavirus was, I was like, well, I guess I don't need no clothes right now, like. Online, I will, but I literally have not been in a store. Also, I've been doing this grocery shopping, cause you know, you, you, you have to feed the children and everything like that. So taxes are gonna be a real issue and I know that that's how a lot of the cities have their revenue to be part of their budget in order for them to do all of the things that they wanted. You know, again, most of us aren't shopping, some people, you know, they brave, you know? Uh, but you know, that's a lot of revenue that's lost. What are the cities gonna be able to do? Like, have you thought about, cause that will be something that you're gonna have to deal with. I don't know what the loss is going to be, but there's definitely.
We will find that out. I know that they had put out a budget yesterday, the purpose budget yesterday, so we will soon find that out. And from that point on, we'll sit down and do the analysis and then see what we're gonna be doing. Cause for right now, we, I really don't know, I don't, I cannot tell you exactly what the budget's gonna be looking like, what is looking at right now and what we're gonna be able to do. But that's something definitely, um, you know, we're gonna have to work together, find a way to piece it together. I always say that it, it is just like your household, like for example, you in that house, you have the F P L bill, right? You have the cable bill, you have the house fund bill, you have the cell phone bill, right? So from that budget, you know, it's a hundred dollars for all those bills to pay, right? So now you don't have a job, right? Guess what you're gonna do? The cable that is not that important anymore, what you're gonna do with it? It's either you cut it off, or you said, you know what, I used to have ten channel, let me get one now, so I can put it towards the bill and then sustain. So that's how you see it, almost the same, um, process as the city budget. You look at the budget and you see where you can allocate or we allocate that fund to be better at, to serve the community at a, at a better rate. So nobody feel like be like out of this or this one is missing totally. So you have to balance it and see where it falls out.
Right, so I know one of the things COVID has taught me, there's a lot of things I have that I realized I didn't need, right? A lot of you, so that's one of the things that came out, we used to do all of this stuff and then you realize like, okay, well, I kinda don't need that anymore, right? So, so, so some of that was, um, a bit forced. But then, you know, you have some people that they were like, I was already living at zero, you know, like, it was, it was like, it's nothing. Like I don't have no extra channels, I don't have no fancy internet, like, you know, we use the fan as much as we can. We open the windows and fight the mosquitoes or whatever it is, right? They're like, I was already on low, 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 low. So there's no way to, there, there's no way, there's nothing else to cut, right? And we, we, we wanna believe that, you know, the city was always, um, operating efficiently, right? So when you get to the point where it's like, okay, like, there's nothing else to cut, so like, what do you do? What are you doing that, what are you doing in that situation?
You partner up with organizations, different organization, you reach out to them, partner up with different cities, you partner up with different counties. You find help wherever you need to find help with, cause you have to survive, you have to, you know, go ahead and stand up for your community. Just like I usually do, like for example, every year, um, I, I do a backpack supply giveaway or turkey giveaway, whatever it is. Last year, I was not able to, I didn't have the, um, the fund enough from my, from selling my pictures, right, my painting. Cause you know, I paint, the money that I got, I use it to do those charity events. So last year, I was not able to, to find enough money, enough resources to serve as many people as wanted, as I wanted to. Guess what I did? I reached out to you, I reached out to Vice Mayor Burger, I reached out to Commissioner Denise Grant, I reached out to Kiwanis. And we were able to, to do a bigger event than I usually do, and that's how you do it.
That's right, together we can.
That's the Combeat.
That's what, I remember that, you know? Donate the location.
Donate the location, we thought, we're gonna find a way to do it. One thing you found out about us, the Haitian people, the Caribbean people, we always find a way to go through things, to go around things. And we resilient and we are strong. There was one thing that you're not gonna find with me as a candidate, as who I am, that's me, who I am. I cannot promise you that I'm gonna do this when I cannot do that. I am not gonna be sitting here, um, um, painting a beautiful speech for you or read or learn those fancy political words. I am not for that, I am more of an action person. When I say that I am gonna do, I am gonna do.
I have to tell you, so my, so, uh, you know, you called me out on not being like, you know, born in Haiti, like a bona fide. Right, I claim it, right? And I remember like a few years ago when we had Hurricane Irma, right? My son was worried about my mother, right? Cause you know, we lost power. And he's like, oh, what's grandma gonna do? And I was like, listen, grandma Haitian, grandma's gonna be okay. And trust me when I tell you, grandma's gonna be eating better than us, right? Because they don't need no lights to eat, right? They don't need any light to eat. We go to my mom's house to check on her and one of the neighbors literally has a concrete block outside. She has a fire going on, on top of the, on the concrete block. And she's outside cooking. And he was like, is that what you meant, mommy? I was like, that's what I meant, but I was like.
That's fair, that's true, and let me tell you what we did. For me and my family, guess what we did? We ate, we ate eggs, eggs cooked from the candle.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay, the candle, like, we ate eggs for a couple of days, morning, afternoon and night, okay? From the candle, from the candle.
They're gonna survive, they're gonna make it happen. I'm telling you, I'm like, don't worry about those Haitians, they gonna be alright. And we literally, the lady was outside with her concrete block, had the fire going. And I'm talking like a full meal, like.
And for everybody, for everybody, and they'll be calling everybody, let's come and eat, let's come and eat, yes.
Made soup, so they always like trading food.
Very, exactly, exactly, definitely, yeah.
Yes, absolutely, so definitely, together we can, that's the, that's.
Yes.
And that's, um, that's what's going on. So we, so the other, the last thing we're gonna talk about, cause you know, we can talk all day, right? We're gonna talk about, is I know that, um, the environmental issues is something that's also really big. One of the things, um, you know, we can talk about it, like the red tides, blue tides, um, you know, uh, red, blue, green algae, all of these different problems. In Florida because of like, you know, big sugar and a runoff. Essentially, everyone's worried about the water, right? So one of the, so one of the things I know with the cities is some of the cities are under septic, some cities are sewer and the septic, they're having issues with that, the sewers, their pipes are old. Is that one of the issues that Lauderdale have? Do they have older pipes that they, that they have to figure out how they can replace? Cause they worry about them breaking and contaminating the water supply, is that a issue that's in Lauderdale or?
As far as I know, I am not aware that we having any path, um, issues. We do, we did have a canal issues where we have, um, you know, flooding, especially when there's big rain, you know, big rain and things like that. But that's something that we did work on, we did replace couple of those, um, pipe underground and they did a big job, especially behind, um, by my house, we have a canal and they did a great job throughout the whole calendar that was giving an issue. And as far as, as, as I'm concerned now, since that job has been done, I have not seen no flooding, no big flooding that, like it was before. So they working hard to fix those issues because it has been an issue since I moved in, but now it, it seems to be, um, under control. It seems to be under control. And, um, Mayor, um, Testan also have one of those. And um Mayor um Testan also have one of those program where they used to, um they called it, I think it's green. Um making sure that we have trees, we have plants, they tell you how to take care of your garden. What to use as far as pesticide, what to use as far as things that are, that have less chemical than the other. You know, preserving the environment and everything else, that's something that he used to do on a monthly basis. But with the pandemic, we have stopped that, but um it, it wa- it was a great program and we used to have um a lot of fun. Actually, a couple of my tree that I have in my house are from that program. It is awesome, yeah.
Yeah, so that's definitely, uh one of the things. So that, um I also spoke to one of the candidates that's running for um soil and water. I'm gonna give a shout out to Bo Simon right now. He's running for Soil and Water C five. Um you know, and he, and when I was talking and he was talking about, uh we started talking about recycling, right? And also composting, because since I'm home more now, you know, you gotta cook a little more and I'm not, I'm not no cook. I'm not, but you know, they got him, okay, right? So one of the things I was worried about is like, you know how like when you're, you know, um using fruits and vegetables and cutting up? And it's like, I feel like I shouldn't throw this away because I have some Canadian friends that used, they were serious composters, right? Everything. And I was like, man, you know, I think I need to like compost or recycle or do something. And he said, you know, um, so it's like one of the things that, yeah, you can start doing it on your own, like, you know, your eggshells, your coffee grinds.
You can put them on the plant.
And you know, make it, make the dirt that you need and try to plant like a little garden. And he talked about how you can plant mint, you know, or herb, just start up like a herb garden. And stuff like that. So those are like the little things that we can.
Me and my mom would do that all the time, yeah. We gotta build a garden in the backyard.
Especially since you're home now.
Yes, exactly.
You can do the, you know, to kind of deal with the, um deal with the environment.
Environment and help with that as well, yes. Most definitely, most definitely.
All right, Nadia Assad, the candidate for Commissioner C three in Lauderdale. How they can get, how they can volunteer for you, give you some money, because I know you need people to call, text, do all that kind of stuff. Give you some money to get the word out, because I know you have two candidates, two um opponents in your race. One, um you know, some of that are very popular. I'm, 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 I know you've been campaigning for like over a year, because we met like sometime last year, early on, and you've been campaigning the whole time. And I'm not one to, you know, talk about other candidates or anything like that, but some of them I, I've heard of. But you, I know, have been doing that work. So tell people how they can help you get to the finish line um in, 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 you know, be the representative for the people of Lauderdale.
Well, and again, thank you so much for having me. It's always a pleasure being here with you, having those conversations, so educational. And I am so grateful for the opportunity. If anybody needs to help me, or not if anybody, I'm asking you guys to come and help and join Nadia Assad's campaign. Because um number one reason is because it's not only based on the campaigning of Nadia becoming a city commissioner. It goes way beyond that. Because I am all for education, I am all for the community. Once you, I will tell you, the people that are in my campaign right now, those are the people that I work with along my whole time being a public servant. Those are the people that I do the backpack giveaway with, that I work with, um throughout of the community, volunteering in the school and everything, yeah. So once you be coming to my campaign, it's not about campaigning, it's about educating the community, about um putting um things that are important out there. For our community to survive and strive. So if you need um my contact information, you can go to my website, it's vote Nadia Assad dot com. Vote Nadia Assad dot com, that's easy. On my Facebook, it's Nadia Assad. Or if you um have the opportunity, because I know covid nineteen has impacted everyone negatively. But um donation um will be greatly appreciated, whatever you can. It doesn't have to be um five thousand dollars. Whatever you can donate, I would appreciate it. You can go to my website again, vote Nadia Assad dot com. Or you can do my car shop, which is Dallas sign, Assad for Lauderdale, Ozell as well, it goes straight to my campaign. And um we need volunteer, we always can use volunteer. I do have um. You know, um the endorsement of couple of organizations such as the fire, they've been working out um in the community with me. Um putting signs out and, you know, trying to knock at the door, you know, how difficult that is. But we definitely need people to make phone calls for us, you know, send out letters, even convincing, we don't knock at doors and then try to communicate. If we see somebody in the street, we, we, we talk to them. But most of the time, we pass on the flyers, educate them about um the census, you know, we always do that, that's, that's a plus. And then we give them, you know, little mask as well to make sure that they protect themselves. I do have gears, um for the PPD gears, I do have masks, gloves, whatever it is that they may need if they decided to come and join me into that um, um journey. So I would definitely appreciate it. Once again, it's vote Nadia Assad dot com. Car shop, Dallas sign, Assad for Lauderdale, Ozell, um which is the same thing as um Nadia Assad, so.
Instagram and Twitter?
I am on also Insta- Instagram and Twitter. I, you will find most of my activities on Facebook. Because that's where I have a lot of people asking questions, trying to come in, you know, in every or, or the little um. Voluntheering that I have done so far, especially with uh the census, we're trying to get more people involved to make phone calls and tell them to. Um fill out the census, because even though now the census personals, they out, they're working, knocking at the doors. For those who have not filled it out, and you know that they will not be opening the door for anybody, you know, just like that. If they see people that they're familiar with, like, you know, with the candidate, you know, and things like that, they will most likely be to respond to um those people. So we take that opportunity to really let them know about the census, you know, um and voting as well, make sure that we encourage them to go ahead and vote. And do little, um you know, registration if they need to, change if they need to. My website, as, as a matter of fact, for those who are listening who live in Lauderdale. If you want to fill out the census, it doesn't take that much time at all. It's vote Nadia Assad dot com. The very first few button that you're gonna see on top of my page will be twenty twenty census. You just click on it and it takes you to that form. No left, no right, it takes you straight to the form and then it takes you a couple of minutes. If you have question about it, you know, whatever it is that you need help with, just go ahead and reach out to me, I can help you fill it out, please. It's very important. Because right now, let me tell you something, the city, it's not that the city is regressing, it's growing. You have more people coming in, especially now with the um target place, that, that used to be the target place, we're gonna have condominium there. So, I mean, not condominium, uh you know, rental, rental place. So you know we're gonna have more people in the city.
Is it affordable housing though? Is it affordable housing? Because I'm like, if I had to pay rent, it's like, you know, is it affordable housing?
No, ma'am.
So that's one of the things that, you know, we have to work as well, you know, I know um just from some of the other forums that I've been listening to. One of the problems that's happening is people can't live and work in the same place, you know? Like, we have a lot of people that work in Broward County that don't live in Broward County. So we're trying to, you know, that's one of the things that we definitely need to do is make it affordable. I grew up in Miami and I know like when I was trying to buy a house, I could not buy a house in Miami. I was like, this cost. And if I wanted to buy a house, I probably was gonna have to dodge bullets. And I was like, well, I ain't trying to do that, like. I'm not no fancy person, but I don't need to dodge a bullet so I can live in Miami. And so I hadn't moved into Broward. Broward, but I worked, um, I worked in Miami because I. So, and so Broward is having that problem now. You have people that are working in Broward and they live maybe in Palm Beach or, you know.
Exactly, yeah, Fort Myers.
Lorraine or something like that. It's expensive.
It's not, it's happening, it's happening. So please do fill out the census. If you don't do anything else, please fill it out. That's for you, your family, you know, for the whole community, please fill it out. It doesn't take that much time, it's just a couple of seconds. If I did it, it was not that much. Yes, it is very important. Contact me if you have any questions, whatever help that you guys need from that, just let me know. I'm there for that.
Thank you so much, truly appreciate it, really appreciate um talking to you. We really um are rooting for you on November the third, twenty twenty, that's the election. But let me tell y'all something, order your vote by mail ballots. And when you fill it out, uh make sure you also update your signature. If you're gonna vote by mail, do it early. Don't wait until the last minute to do it. And we also actually don't want people to wait until November third to vote. We want you to vote early, right? Early voting, because you don't, because November third is actually your last opportunity to vote. So we want you to, and I think early voting maybe start like October the twenty fourth or something like that, is that, you know, that's. So we want you to, if you're gonna vote by mail, do it early, send it off, you can track that your ballot was accepted. If you see that it wasn't, we want you to vote early, so you don't wait until the very last minute.
Exactly, yes, because you never know.
Right, you can, you never know. And in case something's not okay, you're not finding out at the last, last moment where we can't hear or correct what it is that's going on, right?
Exactly, exactly, definitely. It's, it's a very important year. This year, it's very important, I can stress it enough. No matter what you guys do, please go out there and vote, exist that right. You know, so many people, you know, back in the day, they die for that right. They, they don't know what they could have done. To see that they could have that opportunity to make changes, to bring changes. That now we have and we just sit back and we decided that we're not gonna vote. Like I always tell people, especially my Haitian community, don't say that, you know what, I'm not voting, my voice doesn't matter, it does matter. Don't let people, eh, don't let people make that decision for you. You know, go to your meeting, go to your city hall meeting, your, your school board meeting, don't let them take the decision that are important to you and your family. Make it yourself, vote, make it a habit to vote. Because at the end of the day, let me tell you something, if you elect me, you elect anybody to a city commissioner for whatever position that you do. Because you are paying those people to serve you, you are paying those people to be there and represent you for whatever it is that you think that your city are in need. If they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, you need to hold them accountable. Ask them what's the reason why this issue has not been fixed, hold them accountable. Don't sit there and say you're not voting because they're not gonna do what you think that they're supposed to be doing, vote them in. And if they're not gonna go ahead and deliver, hold them accountable. But whatever you do, vote.
Vote. Thank you so much. Nadia Assad, Lauderdale Commission, C three.
It was a pleasure.
Always. Okay, bye bye.
Bye. Thanks again for the opportunity, I appreciate it. Goodbye, everyone. Thank you. Have a good evening. I'll see you again next time. I'm sure it's not the first, it's not gonna be the last.
That's right. On Election Day, early voting, we will talk to you again to remind the people who you are and what it is that you're gonna do in Lauderdale.
Go vote, go vote, go vote, go vote. Thank you so much. Good night.